Good evening, and welcome everyone to the September 20th, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021, the Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on September, public hearing on September 20th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternate public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the town website. I will begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta, Will Rubenstein, Jim Saban, Peter Slovak, Ken Smith, Chris Vincent, Joanne Crowley, here. Seeing that we have a quorum present, I'll now call the meeting to order and ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Crosstalk)
First item on our agenda this evening is the public hearing regarding Planning Board zoning articles for the 2023 special town meeting, zoning Article One, accessory apartments, and zoning Article Two sign amendments. I would now like to open the public meeting on these, public hearing on these special town meeting articles. I know at the time as 5:35. Following the protocol for public hearings, I'll first read into the record the notice that was published in the Cape Cod Times on September 5th and the 12th, 2023. Public hearing notice published in the Cape Cod Times on September 5th and September 12th, 2023. Public hearing notice, Yarmouth Planning Board. Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the hearing room of the Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. And via remote access at HTTPS colon double slash backwards US, 02 web zoom US. I never get that right. But I just wanted to do it tonight. Or via telephone and entering the webinar ID to consider the following proposals to amend the Yarmouth zoning bylaw. Number one, amend zoning section 407 accessory apartments and other related sections of the zoning bylaw to eliminate family-related and affordability restrictions for new accessory apartments. Modify the intent and purpose. Set eligibility requirements and limit accessory apartments to one per eligible lot. Define minimum lot, define minimum lot sizes and dimensional requirements. Set minimum and maximum unit sizes with two-bedroom maximum. Set parameters regarding accessory apartment components, location, design, appearance, parking, stormwater, and plan submissions. Set primary residence requirement and a minimum 12-month lease duration. Prohibit rental of owner-occupied unit in any manner and prohibit separate ownership of an accessory apartment. Allow commercial uses for home offices or home occupations per zoning bylaw section 416. Set parameters for inspections, enforcement, and rental registration and affidavits. Provide provisions to address existing family-related accessory apartments and existing affordable accessory apartments. Define requirements related to the transfer of rights upon sale. Retain requirements for special permits for all accessory apartments and add and modify definitions. Number two, amend section 303 signs bylaw to include provisions for the installation of additional signs on town-owned properties to acknowledge the granting of name rights, allowing for sponsorships, or accepting of donations which shall be further defined through a board of selectment policy. Copies of the complete proposed text for the amendments are available at the Planning Division, Yarmouth Town Offices, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664 during the business hours, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, or on the Town of Yarmouth website under the Planning Division. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on these proposals to amend the zoning bylaw should appear at the time and place designated. Written comments will be accepted and should be directed to the Planning Board, care of Kathy Williams, Town Planner, no later than September 19th at 5:00 PM. Yarmouth Planning Board Chair, Joanne Crowley. Let me first begin by introducing members of the Planning Board who have already voted, but I think it's important that I introduce each of them, especially with regard to Article One accessory apartments. They have been deliberating and developing these amendments tirelessly over the last year, and I commend them, commend them for their efforts and their commitment of time to this process. Susan Britta, to my right is Susan Britta, Chris Vincent, and Vice Chair, Jim Saban. To my left, Will Rubenstein, Peter Slovak, and Ken Smith. And as I formally introduce myself, Joanne Crowley. I would also like to thank you, members of the public and many residents of Yarmouth, who have joined us at our various meetings or provided written comments along the way. I see many familiar faces in the room. Your interest in participation is gratefully appreciated. Tonight's meeting agenda, tonight we are presenting two amendments for your consideration. The order of the meeting will be as follows. There will be a presentation by our Town Planner, Kathy Williams, of the two amendments. Public comments will be accepted after each article. Written comments Kathy will then summarize for us after that. And we will begin with zoning Article One. I'd like to just offer as a reminder, please use the microphone, come up to the podium or the table here and identify yourself by your name and address. And public comments will be accepted this evening on the zoning amendments only. We are here to talk about Article One and Article Two with regard to the special town meeting, and we would appreciate if your comments could be directed towards improving, changing, or adjusting those amendments. So I'd like to start with, the beginning with the zoning Article One. Before I turn over the presentation to Kathy, I would like to quickly review some of the history and the background of this provision, Section 407, and how we got to where we are this evening. The first zoning bylaw on accessory apartments was passed in 1989, and it has been successfully amended several times over the years. The current version is limited to family-related or affordable accessory apartments and must be, and all of those apartments must be approved by special permit. In 2019, an amendment to expand family-related definition, it's relatively strict now, and loosen affordability restrictions, was defeated at town meeting. In 2022, the fall of 2022, a citizen petition to create an accessory dwelling unit bylaw highlighted a desire for changes. Some people wanted us to reconsider what we have on the books. The Planning Board received on September 28th, 2022, from the Board of Selectmen, a citizen petition to amend the zoning bylaw related to accessory dwelling units, as they called them. The petition was withdrawn by the petitioners to allow the Planning Board time to develop the amendment that you see, the amendments that you see tonight, and build consensus through public participation and compromise. So how did we develop this amendment? Since that time, how did we get here? Since October 22nd, the Planning Board has held 26 public meetings to discuss and deliberate position, provisions and elements for accessory apartment zoning amendment. Public hearing on, on citizen petition amendments were held in October and November of 2022. The initial public listening session was held in December of 2022. The Planning Board during the spring developed several versions resulting in Draft 12. Three listening sessions on Draft 12 were held in June of 2023. And during July and August, the Board discussed various puts and takes put forward by Planning Board members, resulting in Draft 17, which we now refer to as zoning Article One, Section 407, Draft Number Three, which is what you have if you've picked up some information. So the draft that we're looking at right now, that is the proposed article for special town meeting, is one that we've spent a fair amount of time on, and we welcome your interest, comments, and suggestions to improve it this evening. I'm going to turn the conversation over to Kathy now, who will run through some more details on what the amendment is and what we're expecting.
I'm Kathy Williams, Town Planner. I think by now we all know what an accessory apartment is, but in case anyone needs some additional information, it's really that second smaller housing unit that you have on your single-family lot. It has to have its own cooking facilities, its own bathroom facilities, and its own sleeping quarters. It's a case where it could be something where it could be constructed inside your home, so it could be through, within your home, whether it's something where you're doing a conversion in your basement or second floor or a garage conversion. It can also be attached through some type of an addition to your, to your home, or it can be detached from the primary home, kind of like a carriage house or something in the back of your property. It's also known as an accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which I'm sure you've also heard, and an old-fashioned term was in-law apartment. So why are we doing this? What was the impetus for making these amendments? I think as Joanne mentioned, the citizen petition really drew a lot of attention to the possibility of expanding, allowing accessory apartments, really to increase the number of year-round smaller rental units that we have right now. So we want to do that, but we also want to be sure that we're protecting the character and the appearance of our neighborhoods that we have all bought into. But we really need to have additional rental housing to sustain our workforce, really prevent from lifelong Cape Codders from being displaced and no longer being able to afford to stay here, facilitating people aging in place who want to maybe need a caregiver or something along those lines, and also to continue that family-related, where family members want to live in close proximity, but they don't want to live on top of each other. They want their separate spaces. All of this is really designed to support a strong and stable and diverse year-round community, instead of more of a tourism community that we have sometimes. We also want to do a better use and expansion of our existing housing stock right now. A lot of times we have underutilized existing housing, where you might have one person in a two- or three-bedroom home, and maybe taking some of that excess capacity and utilizing it for an accessory apartment. And we're all trying to do this while balancing not having any significant impacts to our environmental resources. So these are all, what we're going through this evening are all the things that are in the current version. There have been some changes, which I will highlight from Draft 12 to our current version that we're looking at right now. So the first thing related to ownership and rentals is that it must be the property owner's primary residence. I know that that was talked about quite a bit. We really want the property owners to be present and managing their tenant on, on their property. We did add another definition for primary residence, which was a question that came up during the listening sessions. The Planning Board also did spend some time discussing whether second homeowners should be allowed to do an accessory apartment, and after various consideration, they decided they really wanted to have that higher degree of oversight, and also felt that enforcement would be easier if it was someone's primary residence. So we left it as primary residence, and that's the way it was, and that's the way it continues to be. The owner may choose to occupy either the accessory apartment if they're a smaller household, or they can continue to occupy the principal structure. We want to be sure that apartments cannot be sold separately and cannot be put in condominium form of ownership. So we're not looking to be creating duplexes here. This is something that's a smaller accessory apartment to the primary residence. To be sure that we are addressing the year-round rental concerns that we have, we are requiring the leases to be for a minimum of 12 consecutive months, and these are to tenants who we want to be their primary residence. We want them to be our neighbors and our friends and live here year-round. And there's no seasonal or short-term rentals that would be allowed for an accessory apartment, no subletting or room rentals. So if you're interested in having roommates, then you're all going to be on this 12-month, month lease, and I'll be responsible. The owner-occupied unit can't be rented in any manner. So it's not a case where you can get an accessory apartment and then you can Airbnb your property. No, you can't. That, that's where you are living. That's your primary residence. You only get one bite at the apple. And the renters, like who's going to be renting these properties and the rates that are going to be charged? That's something that's going to be determined by the property owner. We're no longer limiting it to just family-related and no longer limiting it to capital affordable. So that's something that the property owner would be able to decide. This is all in the hopes of getting more of these units available for people, people to rent, because there are a lot of people out there who can afford some market rate rents. They just can't find anything. So hopefully this will be increasing the stock that's available for people. There's some general requirements that's included in the amendments. They must comply, and this is, this is true of everyone, but it's emphasized in the, in the bylaw, that you need to comply with building and health codes. Those are the two big ones that are probably going to be the, the biggest hurdles people might need to get over. And then, of course, any other federal, state, and local laws, so any of our wetland regulations, you still have to comply with all of those things. Zoning is just one component of, of a buildability question. We want to be sure that you have a complete and separate household unit. Like I said before, it's a separate sleeping kitchen and bathroom. In the version 12 that was reviewed at the listening sessions, we got very specific with regard to the, a stove and a size of a fridge, but based on one of the comments, we did look, and that is included in the sanitary code already, so we just went ahead and took that out. Only one accessory apartment is allowed per lot, so you can't have a single-family home and then two or three accessory apartments. It's just one. And it applies to single-family properties, meaning if you have a duplex or you are multifamily property already, you would not be eligible. You also need to have a minimum of 10,000 square foot lot, and it would be allowed in the residential zoning districts, the B1, B2 business districts, and the medical overlay district. And I'll show you where those are located on the next slide. We're also excluding any deed restricted affordable because they're not allowed to rent out any portions of, of their affordable units. And then anything that was developed under a comprehensive permit or Chapter 40B, that's the state law that kind of allows developers to bypass some of our zoning to promote the creation of affordable housing, and they usually have smaller lots and higher densities already. And then, of course, a certificate of occupants is going to be required for the accessory apartment before someone can inhabit it. So this is just showing you on the zoning map. It's, it's a kind of a little bit difficult to see, but the B1 is the light, light blue, and it's kind of near Station Avenue, Old Exit Eight, and then peppered along a few sections of Route 6A. B2 is all along the Route 28, but the vast majority of our community is residential. All this yellow, the green, the orange, and all this tan would be all residential zoning districts, where an accessory apartment would be allowed. So what do we want these accessory apartments to look like? How are they going to be fitting into our community? So we want to be sure that the apartment is clearly subordinate to the primary residence. So it's going to be smaller. It's not going to be equivalent like a duplex. It's going to be smaller. And we want the appearance of the property and the buildings to continue to look like a single-family residence, and the design to be consistent with a single-family home. If you're in Old Kings Highway, which is north of Route 6, there's additional design requirements that you will have to go through, and you would still need to adhere to all of that. Two onsite parking spaces are required for the accessory apartment, and a minimum of two are required for the principal residence. So these are onsite, so that we're not going to be relying on off-street parking. You have, need to show that you have the capability of having onsite parking for an accessory apartment. The new parking, we want to make sure that people weren't going to be parking in their front lawn, so the parking cannot be in the green space in front of the main house. And then we also wanted to be sure that it was adequately screened from your neighbors. Originally, in Draft Number 12, we had a set limit of 10-foot setback from your property line. Based on further discussion and input, really decided that the, the concern is really making sure that the parking was screened from your neighbor, not necessarily a specific distance, excuse me. So we included it in adequately screened from the butter via whether you have existing vegetation, proposed vegetation, or fencing. And then home offices and home occupations per Section 416 would be allowed in an accessory apartment. Those types of home occupations are very benign, that you know employees, know customers, know signs, and everything needs to be fully contained within the residence. So you shouldn't even know that someone has a home office or a home occupation if they're applying all the rules. So one of the other criteria here is, in the regulations, is related to dimensional standards. We want to make sure that the accessory apartments meet all the current dimensional standards that are out there. When we're talking about dimensional standards, we're talking about building coverage. How much of your lot can be covered by your structures? What's the height that's allowed in the building? What are the setbacks from your side yard, from your budding neighbor? How far can it be back from your street? And how far can it be back from your rear property line? So all of those requirements for a new accessory apartment has to meet our current bylaw. There's some, some properties out there that are have non-conforming structures. They get, they're already a little bit closer to the property line, and they can continue with that. What we're saying here is that if you're creating a new accessory apartment, you're adding an addition or a new structure, it needs to meet the current dimensional standards. That gives a little bit more protection for our butters that you need to be a little bit further over. We also took a look at the minimum lot sizes. The Planning Board did talk about lot sizes a lot after the listening sessions, and they took into consideration a lot of comments that people had, of maybe it should be a quarter acre, maybe it should be something a little bit larger. The town has a lot of smaller, non-conforming lots already. But after a lot of discussion, the Board ultimately felt that what we had in the original was a good compromise. So what we had then, and what we still have now, is a minimum of 10,000 square foot lot for a studio or one-bedroom accessory apartment, so those smaller-sized apartments. And then, if you want a larger two-bedroom apartment, you have to have a minimum of 15,000 square foot lot. Under no circumstance can you have more than a two-bedroom accessory apartment. And this map here, and there's also a board in the back here, just kind of shows you the different sized lots in town. So ineligible lots shown here, anything that's white or, or that bright red or bright pink color, those are smaller than 10,000, or they're not single-family homes. They might have duplexes on them or something like that. They would not be eligible for an accessory apartment. The blue that you see peppered around here is between 10,000 and 14,999, so they would be eligible for a studio or a one-bedroom based on zoning. They have a lot of other things they'd have to overcome. And then the green is the 15,000 square foot or larger, and they would be allowed up to a two-bedroom apartment. The gray area there is the Zone 2, which is the area of well, wellhead contribution. That's the area that all of our drinking water wells are drawing from, from. And properties that are located in the Zone 2 are limited based on Title V regulations to the number of bedrooms, one bedroom for 10,000 square foot of lot size, or if you have like a grandfathered lot, a grandfathered number of bedrooms on your property. So for example, right now, if you had a 21,000 square foot lot, and you would have to, you would only be allowed two bedrooms, one per 10,000. But if you had a 21,000 square foot lot and you've had three bedrooms on there since 1955, you're kind of grandfathered for the three bedrooms. What this really means is that if you're creating an accessory apartment in the Zone 2, you may need to eliminate one of the bedrooms because you can't add on any bedrooms because of the specific Title V regulations. So what happens is you end up eliminating a bedroom in the house to put it into the accessory apartment. So we spent a lot of time talking about different unit sizes and what that might, might look like. Again, always wanted it to be accessory to the primary residence. So studio and one-bedroom accessory apartments can't be larger than 50% of the habitable floor area of the primary residence, or 800 square feet, whichever is actually smaller. And I have a little example down there at the bottom. So if you had a 900 square foot ranch, you had a 200 square foot attached garage, and a 600 square foot finished basement, you would only be considered to have 900 square foot of habitable area because garages and basements are excluded, and therefore you get 50%. So you'd only be allowed a 450 square foot accessory apartment. Kind of gives you an idea, if you had the 900 square foot ranch, even though you might have things attached and underneath, it's 50% of that. The two bedrooms is again with the 50% of the habitable floor area of the primary residence or 900 square, square feet, whichever is smaller, giving a little bit larger unit size for the second bedroom. And, but under no circumstances, regardless of habitable, we want to make sure that we're creating functional, livable spaces, so we're having a 350 square foot minimum requirement regardless of habitable floor area. This is just giving you an idea what some different sized apartments might look like. A 350 square foot studio on the left, and then a one-bedroom, 550 square foot apartment, and then over on the right, what a 900 square foot apartment might, might kind of layout looking like. We kind of did that to make sure we were having the sizes made reasonable, functional units out of, out of those sizes. So the permit requirements, I think this is the biggest change from Draft Number 12 that we reviewed during our listening sessions. During that time, we had three specific by-right carve-outs. What we mean by by-right is that that's something that does not need relief from the zoning bylaw and can be applied for, you can go ahead and apply for a building permit. You don't need to get a special permit or have that public hearing visit with the zoning Board of Appeals. There was three options that had been discussed in the listening session. The first one was if you were, once you construct your accessory apartment, your lot fully meets all of the dimensional standards. That means if you're in the R40 zoning district, you already have a minimum 40,000 square foot lot. You're meeting all the setback requirements, the lot coverage, and the height. All of those things are being met. The second one was kind of saying if, if you are able to construct your apartment completely within your existing structure, so you're not really seeing anything from the outside except for those egresses that are required for safety and building code requirements, and you're limited to a studio or one bedroom, that was something that was being viewed as being by-right. And the third option there was if you were going to do an addition or a new detached structure, again, meeting all of the dimensional requirements, limiting it to a studio and a one-bedroom, but having it on a minimum of a 25,000 square foot lot. So these are the things that were discussed during the, during the different listening sessions. What ended up happening is the Planning Board deliberated on the public comments that were received, and basically decided to have all of the accessory apartments permitted via special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals, and eliminating all of the carve-outs at this time. So special permit, what, what benefits, or what's the difference there, is that you would actually be required to have that public hearing with the zoning Board of Appeals. You would, if you lived within 300 feet, you would be getting a directive butter notification, so you'd be knowing that that would be happening, and then you would be able to provide public comment, either written or at the hearing itself. And then the zoning Board of Appeals has very specific criteria for special permit approval, making sure that there's no undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion will be created, and there'll be no substantial harm to the established or future character of our neighborhood or town. Right now, all accessory apartments are by special permit, as Joanne mentioned. Vast majority of them, almost all of them, are approved with very minor conditions. This just gives a neighbor an opportunity to maybe identify an issue that the ZBA might not, not be aware of, and it could be something that could very simply be addressed with a small condition of add a little piece of fence over here, or, or something along those lines. So records and inspections and enforcement, we are going to be requiring affidavits to be submitted to the Building Department so that we know if the unit is being rented, and if it is being rented, that we have some type of documentation of that 12-month lease. Again, we want to make sure that we're providing year-round rental units, and also, or whether you're identifying the, whether the unit is being used by a family member and it's not being rented. We also want to make sure that they're certifying that they're complying with all of Section 407, which includes that primary residency requirement. The affidavits would be, this is a change from the previous revision, is that the annual, I'm sorry, required annually for rentals, because that's done through the Health Department, and then every two years for family-related apartments, the affidavits would be required. Rental apartments, rentals of any nature must register annually and be inspected by the Health Department. That's current now, and it would apply to accessory apartments. It applies to them now. Family apartments not being rented are inspected every two years by the Building Department. That's just to go in and make sure everything is still being rented the way it's supposed to be rented. It didn't convert to a, I'm sorry, not rented, but used for a family member, and it didn't all of a sudden be converted to a rental, because if it did, then it needs to get inspected and get that rental certificate from the Health Department. The Building and Health Department maintain a log of all approved and inspected apartments and keeping track of that. And if there's any failed inspections or lack of affidavits, there is enforcement procedures that the Building Department can enforce in order to make them comply, or they run the risk of losing their accessory apartment use. And any violations are also subject to fines and penalties, which, which have been issued in the past. So what happens to our existing family-related and affordable apartments? Right now, we have about 52 existing family-related and only three affordable apartments. And these units can continue in accordance with their special permits and any other restrictions or limitations that were put on them through their special permit, or they do have the option to convert to an unrestricted accessory apartment, meaning they don't have to limit it to family or a capital A affordable, which limits their rent rate via a special permit. What happens upon sale of the property? For new accessory apartments that are built after this, built after this new bylaw is in place, it transfers on sale, and the new owner needs to submit an affidavit within 90 days of the sale, if they have a tenant, if it's transferred with a tenant in place, or prior to occupancy or rental, if it was transferred with no tenant in place. Existing family-related accessory apartments terminates upon the sale unless the new owner records a declaration of covenant within 90 days of the sale. We originally had 45 days. That was another comment that came out of the listening session, that that might be a little bit too short, so we've extended all of these to 90 days. And then just identifying the new family member and ensuring that they're going to agree to all the previous conditions. And again, if you don't take any action, then you kind of lose your right, and you'd have to reapply for approval through a special permit. Existing affordable accessory apartments are the same as family-related, except they may also have some affordable housing restrictions that need to be agreed to and abided by for that transfer. I do have some written comments, if you wanted me to read those.
Sure, why don't we do those now, Kath? Sure.
I did get a telephone call from Vita Morris. I know that she's here today, and she requested a modification to the definition of the primary residence to make it more grammatical. You have that in your packets. I think it's a very good suggestion. Oh, I think it's a very good suggestion, and we should make that change. I think it's a very good suggestion, and we should make that change. Steve DeYoung commented, he had no position on the signed amendments, although he noted they seemed benign. He indicated the accessory apartment provisions were a great idea, based on a well-vetted effort. He received confirmation that the zoning Board of Appeals' special permits will now be required for all accessory apartments per the existing use table. He just wanted that confirmed, that that change had been made. Barbara Brandt was in favor of both amendments, which she felt made sense from a practical and fiscal point of view. Liz Argo indicated the amendments sounded like improvements to her. Joan Carr stated zoning changes should wait until we have a better understanding of how the immigrant issue will affect our town and this zoning proposal. She also noted, we have a perfectly good accessory apartment bylaw in place. Kathleen Schatz of Harbor Road, "Does not support the construction of accessory apartments until the town has a completed sewer system due to impacts some septic systems on our ecosystem and watersheds." She stated, "All accessory apartments should require a special permit," which they do under the current amendments. Michelle LaRoe Conover from Bayview Street expressed concerns about by right provisions, and supports a special permit process. Feels parking is already an issue, with some homes not having their own driveways. Feels the apartments should be affordable, capital A affordable, and family to address our housing needs. Feels enforcement would be an issue, noting the inability to address issues at motels with the current housing emergency. Felt the number of eligible properties would be a burden on resources, and how would septic systems handle the additional people. Received a written comment from Elizabeth and Richard Powell. Powell's indicated that the current codes and regulations are functioning as intended, and this is not the time to allow for the construction of accessory apartments by anyone, anywhere, especially in light of the numerous affordable housing initiatives already in process. They noted, "The recent influx of immigrants will strain Yarmouth's resources." Ron Turner from Wimbledon Drive recommended that the town keep the current code as it is, as he feels it is functioning as intended, focusing on family and affordable housing applicants. Although he thinks Yarmouth has done a great job so far balancing the wants and needs of the community, he felt relaxing the code to allow anyone into an accessory apartment is troublesome. He knows the town's resources are already strained.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I'd like now to ask any planning board members if they have any questions of Kathy at this point. Otherwise, we can move to soliciting some public comment. Board members, okay? Okay, let's proceed. Anyone who would like to offer a comment, please raise your hands. And when you come to the podium, we need to know your name and address. And I would appreciate if you keep your comments to a reasonable amount of time, because there are a fair amount of people here, and we do have quite a few people on Zoom, which we also want to capture. So I'd like to go to the audience here first. So who would like to make a comment? Yes?
Good evening. My name is Arthur Warren. This is my wife, Judy. We live at Two Shore Road in West Yarmouth. And while you're doing an outstanding job, we do have some suggestions and questions, which we hope will just illuminate the product you're creating, and perhaps a better result. I just want to start at the beginning, at least my part of the partnership here. I'm against this proposed bylaw. I think that the amendment itself is very premature. The existing bylaw works. We live in a neighborhood where, within view, we have three ADUs. And frankly, all that's needed is two exceptions. One, I would suggest adding a living-in-place or caretaker provision to the existing ADU That makes sense, and it's consistent with your purpose and intent. That's not complicated. Everyone in this room can understand that. We get old, we might need help. If you want a caretaker that's not a family member, not a family member, that should be allowed. Number two, we live in a neighborhood where the family members with existing ADUs die. There are no longer any family members. We don't see the current bylaw dealing with that. They become rental units, which are used, because we happen to live within stone's throw of Lewis Bay, as a wonderful source of income. Very simply, the family living in the larger house along Lewis Bay move into the smaller, former family-in-law ADU, and rent their larger homes for $6,000 a week, $8,000 a week, $10,000 a week, $12,000 a week. This is going on right under everybody's noses. It's been going on for a long time. I don't know how you would manage it, but it needs to be done. Want to just make a comment, just a briefing for everybody here. National study on ADUs. The two states with the most ADUs are Florida and California. Let me give you a profile. First of all, who backs ADUs? It's the real estate industry. Lobbyists. And why? High-income, high-income, white applicants are the primary builders and applicants of ADUs. There are no existing financing methods that I know of, and I checked with local banks for building ADUs. You either have an equity line of credit, or you've got to have a lot of money in the bank. And financing, of course, is very important, especially in a town like Yarmouth. If you're attempting to appeal to lower-income or middle-income workers, and you want them to build an ADU, there has to be a means for them to afford it. And if they don't have equity in a home, or they don't have private funds, it's a problem. I'm just going to share some ideas with you quickly. Can you explain why the proposed ADU amendment does not include rent restrictions or any income requirements for rent? No cap on rent. You can charge whatever you want. I believe you, that's what you said, Kathy. It's up to the homeowner. Can the board please explain that?
I think I let the board members each chime in. But my collective memory here is that, as a property owner, a property owner has certain inalienable rights, and that if they want to charge nothing, or they want to charge $1,000, it's their decision.
Okay.
Whatever their estimate is on what they might need as a return on investment, if it's a new build, or if it's whatever they've invested in it, that's a very personal decision, and one that a zoning bylaw should be silent on.
Okay.
Any other members like to chime in on that? Mr. Saban?
Sure, ma'am, Chuck, thank you. Part of the whole idea here is that with the affordability guidelines, I've heard of the person who's made $5 too much to get help from the government, $10 too much. I make just a little bit too much to get help, but I don't make enough to survive. So those are the types of people that cannot get into the affordable housing market of accessory units. By removing those restrictions, now we're making it available for those people that are just, you know, the question always becomes, who are we doing this for? Our rookie cop, our rookie firefighter, your nurse's aide, you know, your kids who graduated from our high school and are mowing lawns for a living. I mean, those are the people that this is, will now allow. They're not restricted by having to make too little to afford a unit. So I think that that's a big part of this as well. We're trying to address a big problem, slice by slice.
Okay, and the national study, which I'll make available to Kathy, doesn't even begin to make a dent in homeowner needs and the shortage. The draft permits 12-month rental of the larger home by allowing the homeowner in the larger home to move into the ADU. I just gave you rental statistics in our neighborhood. How is that helping? How can someone who moves, lives in a big house, within walking distance or sight of a beach, or a beautiful pond in Yarmouth, move into a smaller unit? Be allowed to rent the big house for 12 months for a lot of money? Do you think a policeman, a firewoman, a rescue personnel can afford rent in the larger home? Just a disparity in the size of the square footage. It means that the larger home is going to have much higher rent, and probably not affordable by the typical workers you're trying to help. And again, I'm not trying to hurt here. I'm trying to help by getting some refinement and some definition, so that we know who in fact we're helping. If it's the real estate industry, I have no pity. If it's real working folks, plumbers, electricians, policemen, I'm all for it. But right now, the way I read this, this is a setup for those fortunate enough to live near desirable recreational areas, to move into a smaller unit, rent a larger unit, charge a lot of money, and it's going on right now. This is, I'm not making this up. It exists in many neighborhoods. You're allowing that to happen. Why not prohibit that? Why not stop or prevent the homeowner in the larger house from moving into the smaller unit and charging big bucks in rent for the larger house? Why haven't you considered that?
Again, I'll try to address it. I think some of you are, and we appreciate, we've had the great privilege of having your thoughts before, and we do appreciate them, because you've spent some, a fair amount of time thinking about this and researching it. I'll go back to, it's private property, and why do you care what your neighbor charges for rent?
Okay.
Why do you care?
We can answer that. We live in a residential zone. We believe that residential--
I'm just trying to understand. Why, your motivation to raise this as a real issue? I'm curious as to, why is that important to you?
It's important because we are residents of this town, and you have a zoning law. The zoning law is, we live in a residential neighborhood, not a commercial neighborhood. And what you're allowing is a business. Anyone who's going to rent an ADU is going to have to file a Massachusetts income tax return for rental income, whether they live in California, Idaho, or Connecticut, and they come to the Cape. You've created a business in addition to VBRO and vacation rentals. You're making our residential neighborhood a business, commercial venture. That's why I care. I don't want to live in a neighborhood where there are commercial ventures beside me, when I want my kids to go out and play and have a neighborhood that is residential. If I want to live in a commercial district, I'll choose to do so. There is a private right everyone has. There are limitations to those rights that are intelligent, and those limitations are your governance. You're the shepherds of the quality of these neighborhoods, and you're doing a damn good job. You listened to everyone. You had meetings, you made corrections, you did everything right. From a governance standpoint, I'm proud of you, and I'm not here to be adversarial. I'm trying to be realistic. We live in a neighborhood, and we love it, and we just don't want to see it turned into a commercial venture, because somebody wants to make a buck. That's the answer.
Thank you.
Okay? I've got one more, and then I'm going to--
If I may jump on that, if I may make a comment on that. If we follow that train of logic, then we would not allow any rentals at all in the town of Yarmouth.
Oh, boy, would I love that. You come to our neighborhood, try to drive down Lewis Road--
My neighborhood too, sir, so I'm sure all of us do.
Drive down Lewis Road with the existing rentals. They park in the streets, hedge row. I give you Main Avenue, Vermont. There's so many people renting because of VBRO. You've already allowed wholesale, commercial ventures, totally unregulated, not because this town is stupid. You don't have the personnel to manage what you have in place right now. This is a hard-working planning committee, the building committee you call, they're very responsible. There's not enough personnel to manage the rentals you have now, let alone allowing, what, 40, 50, 60 more apartments and gaming of rental income in residential neighborhoods? Again, I'm giving you reality here. I'm not trying to be obstructionist. I want, if you're going to propose this to a town for a vote and democracy, it should be the best possible product, okay?
Yes, Mr. Saban?
I appreciate the comments of the individual, but I'm sure other people want to have comments, and if we could ask them to wrap that up.
Yeah, I'll wrap it up. It seems, basically, you're putting the onus of the housing crisis on everybody in here that owns property, individuals who own property. Look, I want to share in the solution, but you're putting a heavy burden on us and everyone who owns property. That's not a bad thing, but you can't sit here and look at us as a board and tell us, what is the outcome? How many units do you think you're going to produce to help policemen, firemen, people who work plumbing, electricians? How many units do you think you're going to create with this radical change in zoning?
I can tell you that if we don't do it, we'll produce zero.
Okay, so--
In the last 10 years, we've produced 46.
46, okay.
Over 10 years.
With the housing shortages in the town of Yarmouth?
This isn't, you know, I guess, I think, we appreciate your comments, and I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to move on.
Happy to.
This ADU is never meant to cure the housing crisis.
Read your purpose.
It's meant to help.
Read the purpose.
It's meant to help. Yes. I understand. Any other comment? I'm sorry, did you want to make a comment as well?
May I?
Yeah, quickly. We've met. We've met.
I know that we've been struggling with the issue of what's the primary residence, and what would be a way of determining that. We just want to throw out the idea that perhaps a requirement that the homeowner actually file their state income tax at that, from that address. That's their address. It would be one way to prove. Or if in fact they are voters, they're registered voters in the town of Yarmouth, and they vote here, would it be another indication that they are, that's their primary address? The other, I would like to suggest, is there, is there, would it be helpful to suggest that the tenants must be people who work here, and here, whether here is Cape Cod or Barnstable County? If that's, if that's the stated goal, is to assist providing rental options for the workforce, perhaps that'd be an idea to consider.
Definition includes that they are residents. The rental, the renter has to be a resident, so I think we've addressed that. That had come up in a previous meeting.
And then finally, are there provisions for reimbursement to the town of Yarmouth for the additional burden that the town will face in both reviewing applications, inspecting the premises, and enforcing, if you--
There are certain fees that are associated with filing.
That's, and are they, you know, are they sufficient? Can the town do it? I mean, right, you know, right now, things happen in the town, and even in your previous meetings, you've suggested, well, if something's not right, the neighbors will call the town and complain, which again, is both, you know, it's unpleasant to drop a dime on your neighbor. Nobody wants to do that, and I'm not sure it's practical. So I'm looking for some indication in the budget that there's funds to support the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. I think I, Vita Morris, please. Your address as well, Vita?
Vita Morris, 74 Shaker House Road. I asked to be ahead of Ms. Greeley, because this, the thing that I'm proposing deals with the primary, the definition of a primary residence.
Yes, we've received that, thank you.
So shall I-- So shall, the way Kathy was speaking, I, I thought she wanted me to, to indicate what the change is.
No, they, they, I'm sorry, Vita, they have a copy of it.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate that, Vita. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Christine Greeley, Glenwood Street, West Yarmouth. First and foremost, I have to tell you that having been here like since 1981, I don't think I've seen a board have to do the kind of work that you all have done during this past period of time. And it was basically foisted upon you, but I have to tell you that as a citizen and resident, you've really done some incredible work. Doesn't mean I've always agreed with everything that you've said or done, but you have really gone through a process truly of listening and everything else. Where I still have some concerns are several areas. One is, the 10,000 square feet just really, really bothers me. I am looking at a situation down in my neighborhood where the priority for the septic, for the sewer system basically is going to be along Route 28, and they are talking about, I mean, it looks like sometimes decades before they're ever going to get down to our houses down along Lewis Bay and some of the areas that I think are incredibly important for the searing. So the idea of putting increased density on a 10,000 square foot lot with septic systems that we know are now not considered to be appropriate, in other words, the state is looking to change the, the nature of them and to look for some serious upgrades, very, very much concerns me. I do think that many of us who bought, you know, in the community, you know, looked at the nature of our neighborhoods, and we were not looking at neighborhoods that were duplexes. We were looking at single-family houses that were kind of sweet and cute, you know, kind of cottagey looking or whatever, that I think this is really going to change a lot of the nature and character to a great degree because, as others have indicated, the parking is a nightmare. I mean, you know, I live also, like the Warrens do, in the areas that are very, very popular for summer rentals, and the partying on the weekends and the car parking and just the number of cars that are there make it possible at times even my concern for emergency vehicles. So I'm glad to see that you did some work in terms of controlling the parking, but I also think the enforcement issue is going to be coming up. And that comes to another of my points, and that is that right now, and it's been commented on already, the staffing for the enforcement issues in this community, particularly as you live through the summer, are exceedingly difficult. And we have some incredibly hardworking staff. I'm not, you know, criticizing them. I'm just saying it's well beyond their capacity. So that, really, I keep wondering, where are we going to be getting, you know, the money and the kinds of things that need to be done? I was glad to hear you mention fees and that because I really think there maybe should be some annual fee or something like that. And I also wonder, because I know sometimes there are a lot of places rented where they've not filed with the Board of Health or gotten the permits they need. So I think the whole issue of the enforcement and really following through, once a permit is issued for this, I mean, they need to go into a special category where you guys are following up on it. Maybe there's an annual fee because of the fact that you do have work that's going to have to be done by department people here, well beyond what they've been having to do already and seriously overworked. The other thing has to do with the owner occupied, owner occupied, because at one point in time, I heard that there was some debate in terms of whether or not LLCs or other kinds of people or sort of formal homeownership categories on these properties were going to be allowed. Has there been clarification done on that?
Yeah, the definition is a primary residence.
A primary residence, so it's been cleaned up with that entirely. Because I also wonder about, what about people? Because one of the things I like about the idea that you're going to have people living in, in one of the units there is you've got an onsite rental management personnel, unlike a lot of the other situations we have. And so, you know, what happens if there's some of these people, even though they claim to be year-round residents, go spend months away somewhere else, you know, just not occupying, maybe they're not renting the unit, but they're absent and things like that. So it does worry me to some degree about how the occupancy is going to be going and what's going to be happening with that. But I don't know.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Greeley. We appreciate anything else. We appreciate it.
I appreciate, as I said, you've done a lot of very hard work, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to go to one of our remotes.
Okay.
Can you help me?
Let's do it.
Lou?
I'm Will. It's okay. I know who you meant. I believe it's Megan.
Yes.
Megan?
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Your name and address, please.
My name is Megan Moore, and I live at 20 Astralane. I'd like to preface my comments by saying I am a resident of Barnstable, but I am a former member of the Housing Committee there, as well as a Human Services Committee, and I currently serve in the local Comprehensive Planning Committee.
Okay, Megan, we would, we would like for your comments to be as brief as possible. We're trying to focus on resident comments first. So since you're up and you're on, we'd be more than glad to hear what you have to say, but please make it as brief as possible. Thank you.
I, I will make it brief. I will say that Barnstable has adopted an ADU bylaw, and as far as I'm aware, there have not been any issues with it. It is modeled quite similarly after the Yarmouth bylaw, including requiring a primary residence for the owner to be either the accessory dwelling unit or the primary dwelling. This is something that a lot of people have worked hard on, including, you know, you folks in Yarmouth for a long time, and I appreciate the work that's being done throughout Cape Cod on these housing situations. So that's all I have to say is I hope that this passes and that we can increase housing stock and start to decrease some pressure on housing prices for working-class families. That's all.
Thank you, Megan, for dialing in. I appreciate it. Another one, Lou.
I don't see, I don't see any hands.
Hands raised.
Are we waiting? That's what we're going to wait for?
Yeah, waiting for a hand raise.
Oh, sorry. I don't, I don't see a hand.
Okay.
Is it allowed to talk?
There's one. How about Spiro Mitrikostas? That's, that hand I see.
Can you hear us, Spiro?
I can hear you great. Can you hear me?
Yes. Well, a little louder.
I'll, I'll try, but thank you for taking, taking my question. Just a point of clarification. When we talk about enforcing a violation, are we talking about making that accessory dwelling unit vacant until such time that they can comply?
Typically, if I can answer.
Yes, you may.
Typically, there's, there's a process. Once we've been notified of, of an issue or we've identified an issue, we actually have to, need to go out and make, and confirm it and make sure that it's actually a violation. We get a lot of notifications from people about violations that turn out not to actually be violations. So to be fair to everybody, you have to go out and take a look at it. And then there's the correspondence and discussions with the property owner. Oh, they may not be aware that they needed to do X, Y, and Z. Okay, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and it solves it right away, and there's no, no further problem. You may end up being a case where you get multiple notifications, and then if you don't do that, then you get fines. It's only when it gets to the extreme case, or if, obviously, if there's a safety issue, that's something a little bit different. But a violation of zoning would, would someone actually end up potentially losing the use of an accessory apartment. So there's a whole process that would need to be undertaken, and that's kind of why it's so time-consuming, because everybody, everybody has their own property rights, and we want to make sure that we're being fair to everybody in investigating these things and going through the process. That's consistent for every single homeowner. It's not unique to one particular person or one category. It's consistent throughout all the violations.
You know, that's understandable. That's, that's true of all building inspections. I'm just trying to get to the point where we have a violator, they're being forced to comply by getting a tenant with a 12-month lease, or they're not able to, there is no occupancy permit for that unit, put it that way.
I think there's different things that can be done. I think to lose your occupancy, that's probably at the end of the process, not something that would be a go-to at, at the beginning unless, again, of course, unless there's some safety issues where there's violations.
Thank you. That's enough.
Okay, thank you, Spiro. Any, back to the audience here. Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Again, your name and address, please.
So I'm Cheryl Ball, 38 Hemian Drive, and I have some comments and then some questions too. So my comment is, is a concern that I have, which I wish I had the problems that my friend over here has. I don't live on Shore Road. However, in my neighborhood, there's a house right now that recently sold, and it's a four-bedroom house. And when I walk past that house, there's about eight or nine cars that I see in front of that house. I don't know who's living in it. I don't know if the primary owner of that house is living in it or not. So that person, under these guidelines, would probably be eligible to build an accessory dwelling unit on their property if they are currently living in the house. And now we're looking at possibly adding on two more bedrooms and, you know, four more cars. So it's, it's a concern that I have that, you know, how is this really going to be controlled as to what's really going on in the house? You know, back to the point that somebody made about oversight, you know, who's going to actually be following up that the primary owner is actually living in that house? You could say you're living in the house. You could even have your mail delivered there, but then you can have a P O. box somewhere else and not actually be present and living in that house. So that's, that's a big concern that I have.
Can we, can we talk about that for a second?
Certainly will.
So I think that's a reasonable concern, but my understanding is it's not, it's not a guarantee that the person that you're talking about can literally build an ADU in that scenario. We don't know what their septic, septic system is sized for. We don't know their lot size. So there's things that we don't know, but I don't think it's automatic.
Of course. Those are possibilities, but according to everything that I've seen as far as the guidelines, this house would be eligible for it.
Well, I'd like to, I mean-
It meets the lot size requirements and so forth.
I'd be very surprised if that had a six-bedroom septic system.
If I may, yes.
They're going to have to swap out beds, bedrooms from the primary house in order to build an ADU. So I don't believe it would go beyond four bedrooms. Please tell me if-
You'd have to know the lot size and the lot lines and the setbacks, and there's a lot of information that, that, that you don't know and that we don't know. So just to say that they can do it, it, that's-
It's a hypothetical.
And it's incumbent upon the owner of the house to then do all that.
It's a hypothetical, and it may not be this particular house, but there may be other houses. And I know that there are other people who have talked to me that they're seeing similar things in their neighborhood where they're seeing, you know, single-family homes now converted into these multiple, multiple people living in that, that one family house.
But that's different, but that's different than what we're, that's different than what the-
But I'm just saying, it would add, it would compound to that problem by allowing an additional dwelling unit on the property.
I think, I think the point that the speaker's trying to make is it's not the size of the house, it's the enforcement issue.
Yes.
Enforcement has been an issue for this board since the time we started talking about this. We all know that enforcement is a very weak spot in this program, and quite frankly, we don't have an answer for it. It's not Mark, because Mark doesn't have a hundred people going out and, and doing enforcement for him. We know it is a huge issue. It's a weak spot in this program. Mark has testified numerous times that he is not going to be able to enforce this as he would like to, simply because he doesn't have the staff. One of our speakers mentioned, you're going to have to drop a dime on your neighbor. No one likes to do that, but that's part of the enforcement. And quite frankly, I don't think we have an answer for it. We, we talked about maybe having some dedicated funds to, to some of the fees to go back to Mark so that he can flush it through the program and maybe hire some more enforcement people. But enforcement is a major issue. I totally agree with you. And the ones, the, the ADUs that are flourishing now, we probably don't even know that they're ADUs because Mark can't enforce it. And unless you're ready to call and, and sort of tattle on your neighbor, and that's the nature of the program. It is a weak spot. I admit it's a weak spot. I don't like it because I don't like to put anything out there in the public unless we can, unless we can enforce it. That's our job. If we're going to put something on the books, we should be able to enforce it. In this case, it is very weak. We can't.
We don't have enough police and firefighters, okay, but we still wake up every day and we do what we do.
That's a different kind-
That's not a good enough reason.
It's not good enough. We're not thinking, just a second. We're not thinking about reasons. We're talking about the concerns of the residents. This is not a reason not to do it. It's just the explanation as to why the neighbor is concerned.
Again, I'd like, I'd like to return to the, to, I forgot your first name.
Cheryl.
Cheryl. Why don't you continue?
Okay. So then, just as, I had some of the other-
This is your meeting. Our meeting happens afterwards.
So I had, I had some of the same comments that have already been made, so I won't go into those in detail, but I, I share the, the concern about the primary owner not living there the year-round, that they're in Florida half of the year and here for six months and a day, so you wouldn't have the oversight there. I'm also concerned, who would ensure that the person that's actually leasing the ADU is living there for the full year? Because in this gentleman's situation, what if I just agree to rent it to him for, you know, let's say, in the summer, I would normally charge, you know, $10,000 a month for June, July, and August, so now I'm going to rent it $30,000 on a one-year lease, and that person's only going to be there for three months instead of being there for the full year. So that's another thing that would need some oversight. I do have concerns. One of the emails that you received, based on the current situation that we have going on with the migrant situation, I, I'm terrified of how that might impact this. I don't know if these ADUs would be eligible to house people that are part of this migrant program. I'm, I'm very opposed to that. It's a high, it's a big concern for me. If the goal of this program is to create affordable housing for our, our Cape Cod residents, then it needs to go to American citizens. So I believe those are all the points I wanted to make.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else like, like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Joe Delisio. I also live on 38 Hemian. You, you said something, I believe it was Will, that mentioned the septic system. I'm a plumber by trade, so I understand septic system very well.
I do.
Are you going to require upgrades to septic systems? Because as we know, septic systems are getting into our drinking waters and creating a lot of-
I'd like Kathy to answer that, if she could.
Good question.
I think if you need, if you are taking a bedroom out and putting it into an accessory apartment and your septic system is fine, you don't have to do anything. But if you're going to be adding bedrooms, then yeah, you may need to modify your septic system. You may need to add more leaching field area. You may need to up, increase the size of your septic tank. And then there might be new rules that come out in a year from now that you'd, you know, if you're going to do it a year from now, you'd have to meet those. So yeah, you would have to meet the septic requirements.
Excellent. Thank you. And maximum, maximum occupancies, has that been addressed? Are you, a one-bedroom apartment, are you allowing 18 people to live there, or are you putting an occupancy limit?
Again, I'd like Kathy to-
There are occupancy limits on all of our homes, whether you're adhering to them or not. But yeah, there is an occupancy limitation.
That goes back to enforcement.
That's the board, that's usually done through the health department.
It's a, it's a big concern, and, and I plead with all of you not to put something on the books that you can't enforce. So I think step one is to put a place, put in place a plan for enforcement. Mark can't do it all. You know, so if we can't enforce this, all of this stuff on paper is wasted. It's, it's a waste of time and effort. So if we can't enforce it, that's what concerns me as a concerned, as a concerned citizen, as a taxpayer, as a neighbor. I don't want to, you know, it's not just me, it's the neighborhood that we're impacting. So, and like he said, very important, ensure and write it into this law or this legislation that the, the owner has to live in the primary residence. Because if not, you're going to create exactly what he's talking about. And if not for, I mean, without enforcement, people are going to move in in the summer, rent out their house, the, the main part of the house, and, and it's just going to create more problems, and it's not going to do, it's, it's not going to meet the, the needs of what you're trying to meet here. We know we need housing for the people, the hard workers, plumbers that work for me, people that work in kitchens that I eat at, people that mow the lawns, the hard-working people that live on the Cape need housing. We know that, and I feel for those people. But as this is written, I don't think, I think it's going to do more harm than good. So, thank you for hearing me.
Yes, Andrew Marcus.
Andrew Marcus is joining us remotely. Andrew, welcome.
We're just waiting for it to be unmuted. He's on mute.
Andrew, unmute your mic.
We're getting there. Andrew, you need to unmute your mic if you can hear us.
Right, unmute.
Next.
Next.
Yeah, he'll come back. Who else is?
There are no other hands up right now.
No other hands up. Okay. Anyone else in the audience here tonight want to make a public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is, my name's Drew Kraus. I live at 114 Wood Road. And I got involved with the town 2019, the Age Friendly Committee, and I first came to a meeting here about that ADU change that was voted down in the town meeting several years ago. Later, I got involved with the Community Housing Committee, now other things, and I've attended quite a few of these meetings over the last several years. And I'm in favor of the idea of loosening the ADU rules, especially in regard to allowing people to rent to whom they want to rent and allowing them to charge market rates, because it's quite expensive to build an ADU. to build an A.D.U., and restricting it to affordable housing costs doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't think this will cause a huge number of A.D.U.s to suddenly mushroom all over the place. It's going to be daunting for a lot of people to build them, because there are zoning restrictions that are quite severe, I think, in terms of your, what your, how many bedrooms you're zoned for to begin with, and you can't just add bedroom after bedroom willy-nilly. You're going to have to keep it within the zoning. I under, I hear people talking about people that break the rules or are bad neighbors who they know about. That's really, to me, that's a different topic than creating a zoning bylaw. People do break rules, and what our ability to police those people is, is a pretty, pretty complex subject. I really don't know how to address that, a thing like this, but I do think it's a separate subject from creating a rational zoning bylaw. So that's my comment. Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Joshua Trot, I live at 906 West Yarmouth Road in Yarmouth Port. I'm very for these changes to the A.D.U. laws for younger residents like myself who are trying to move out of their parents' house to start a family. These are exactly the kind of housing units that we need to be affordable for a younger person who is just trying to get started and plant their feet here. So I really appreciate all the hard work you've done, and I'm very for these changes.
Thank you very much. Yes. Malcolm Lorraine.
Lee, Lee Hamilton, 27 Plymouth Road, Yarmouth Port, and as a disclaimer, I am a member of the Community Housing Committee, and I also live in a de-restricted affordable house. And I got that unit because a neighbor dropped a dime on the people who were supposed to be their primary residents, and they were living elsewhere and renting out the house. So I'm grateful for neighbors who drop a dime on people who are violating the program. And I was on the ready-to-buy list, and I was next in line, and I'm very grateful, because I have lived in some pretty, pretty bad, dangerous houses over the years, and never was homeless on Cape Cod, but moved around a whole lot. I am completely supportive of this program, because I'm very well aware of the housing crisis on the Cape, and I understand people feel threatened for a lot of different reasons, and I appreciate their being, feeling threatened, but I kind of have a difficulty with the deep need and the strict guidelines you're putting together, and if you see people violating the rules, then drop a dime. I mean, I have no problem with that, because that's how I got my place. I waited for a year before a place to become available, because as a single person, I wasn't going to qualify for any of the new units, they were going to families, and justifiably so. So having lived in a place with dangerous mold, a gas heater that was leaking for ages and created, nobody had a carbon monoxide detector then, a place with cloth wiring, you know, the hilt. So I know, I've experienced the housing crisis, and I'm very grateful to be where I am, and I'm grateful for that neighbor who dropped a dime. And I think, I think you guys have worked really hard on this, I've been to a number of these meetings, we've been talking about it around and round, and enforcement depends on the community as well, and that's my drop-a-dime message.
Thank you, Lee. We appreciate it. Thank you, Lee. Anyone else?
Can I make two points that were not, and haven't discussed and are not on those?
Certainly.
And I know we're discussed previously in your listening sessions.
Could you just, your name again?
Yes, of course, Judy Warren, I live at Two Shore Road in West Yarmouth. And how will you, you don't have to answer it tonight, but please consider, what will be the parameters regarding homes that are owned in a trust? In regard to if the, if the resident who lives in that, in the home owned by a trust, if it's a beneficiary or the trustee, how would you handle that? And secondly, I would love to see some expanded guidance that you would give to the Zoning Board of Appeals who are reviewing, the members who are reviewing the special permit applications, more than what I've seen here in terms of, you know, just don't, you know, try to kind of keep it in character or whatever. Will there be considerations regarding the actual situs of the neighborhood? You kind of go, someone goes look and say, gee, this, that is a really tight neighborhood, and there's already a lot of, there's already some multifamily on that street, or some other A.D.U.? And can you kind of, can you give guidance to the zoning board that they could take those kind of considerations into, those kind of factors into consideration? Because I think that's light, from what I've read thus far.
I think the zoning, the zoning board, and we had a joint meeting with them, and we've received support from them for this amendment. They're okay with us having this amendment, all of the requests go through them, the petitioners need to go through the ZBA. They are a very thoughtful and deliberative group, and if you've watched any of their meetings, you can see that they pay attention to the details, but each situation is unique. And trying to put a definition or a boundary or some, my filter, my filter on what I think might be some guidelines, I think, might not be as helpful as their deliberations, and I do have full, you know, trust in them, that they've made some very good decisions over the year, over the years. And again, there aren't a lot of them. There's been 10, in the last 10 years, there's been 46 accessory apartments approved, and I think they've done a yeoman's job in terms of trying to do the right thing. They have, they have sent some back, they've said no to a few. Someone tried to come in with a 1,000-square-foot apartment. What part of the zoning bylaw didn't you read?
Right.
It says 800.
It's certainly reasonable when the board is applying the numbers requirements, but when you, when you have terms that say, you know, try to keep, maintain the character of a neighborhood, now you get into more subjective matters of taste or design.
Exactly.
And then, and so that's, I'm glad you're obviously in discussion with the zoning board.
That's why, that's why going to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the neighbors come and voice their, voice their views.
One of the, one of the items that we read in this national review of the success or unsuccessful of A.D.U.s, in one state, and we'll, again, we'll share it with Kathy and the, is that the state set up a rule that neighborhoods themselves vote on A.D.U.s. I'm not sure that I, that that's practical or where that would go, but there's a lot out there, obviously, regarding the success or what parts of these kind of programs are practical and not, so I'd be happy to share what we have on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
I just have one comment.
If you could, please.
Put to the mic.
If you could, please.
And then we do have a hand.
Yeah, I see Vita. Yep, thank you.
We have two slides.
Okay.
One requires 10,000 square feet, the other slide requires greater than 10,000 square foot lot. Can you clarify what you intend? Is it 10,001 and greater, or is it a minimum of 10,000 square feet? Just want to make sure the bylaw deals with that, because it does make a difference. If you look at, for example, the Englewood Trust, 53 acres, probably 70 lots, they're 50 by 100, and then there are some larger. I just want to be sure, you intend greater than 10,000 square feet?
10,000 square feet to 14,999 square feet would be eligible for studio and one-bedroom apartment, and then 15,000 or larger would be eligible for the maximum two-bedroom accessory apartment.
5,000 square foot lot is not eligible to do it.
I understand, but I've looked at others, they're medically qualified, not 10,001, it's 10,000.
10,000.
And you intend that?
I intend that.
Okay.
Ms. Morris?
Vita Morris, you know, this mantra that we hear all the time about the lack of affordable housing, usually it's said it's on the Cape, but if we look in our own little bailiwick, the, I think the last bigger affordable housing project that opened up on Route 28, the local residents have, you know, the right to at least 70% of those units, and they barely made it to 60%, barely. So in our own little bailiwick, I wonder what, you know, what's the story really about affordable, lack of affordable housing?
Thank you for that.
Andrew Marcus again.
Andrew Marcus?
Still muted. We'll see if he can unmute, or maybe.
Still muted.
Andrew, can you, can you unmute, Marcus? No. Mr. Niconello?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thanks to the board for all your hard work. This is, you're going to be your last meeting this summer, as of fall is Saturday, so congratulations all, you made it through the summer, and all those marathon meetings you had, along with staff, I see Mark, the building commissioner there, and Kathy, who has done yeoman's work for over a decade now, and hopefully much more work ahead of us. We did have a citizens petition before us, a few town meetings ago, the town planner and this board, a few seasons before that, tried to modify the housing bylaw, as we all know, and we all want to do what's right, and we also want to bring some of those apartments that are under the radar online, and this is what this bylaw does. It kind of captures those people to elevate them to where they should be. So when we had the citizens petition, we kind of pulled back, and we all made an agreement that we were going to come up with a petition. So 17 drafts later, you folks have done a great job, and you came up with a petition, and it's not going to be for everyone to everyone's liking. We have a right in our country to be heard, but we don't have a right to have it our way. So this bylaw should go to town meeting, and those folks should stand up and vote yea or nay when it's presented to them. So again, this is not a perfect bylaw, but it is going to help in our crisis, which we all know we have, and it's going to bring some people out of the closet and be legal, because we know there's illegal apartments out there. So it is going to help. What I'm also happy with is that next fall, we'll be bringing more articles to town meeting, and I would like to see the electric car chargers with digital displays, and I'd like to see some body modifications up and whites back. So thank you all very much, and I hope you're not here after 7 o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Niconello. Mr. Marcus, can you unmute yourself?
Nope.
Put your hand down if you don't want to speak.
Can we override that in the back?
Wait a minute.
No, no, it's all...
I don't know.
Anyone else up there?
No, ma'am, there is not anybody else with their hand raised.
Okay. Anyone else for the comment? Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Were there two? I apologize.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Okay.
Flip a coin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Carol Phelps, we live at 301 West Yarmouth Road, and we have a workforce housing apartment. So I just wanted to share some of great experiences. I've met some wonderful young people. They have been from nurses, there was a doctor who went on, and a police officer, firefighter, and they've thanked me so much for providing them with a home, that they were just super excited. They've also been able to save enough money to buy their own home, so I've had a lot of good experiences in that realm. So if this is done right, and I'm a landlord, so I do do a lot of screening on people, you have to really do thorough screening, because, you know, there's desperation out there for housing, and they will straight up look you in the eye and lie to you. But if you do your homework and do your research, you'll have wonderful tenants, and I'm so happy. We're still, we have a very young lady now who's working in a conservation job, and she's just from Michigan, I think, so she's been thrilled. So I hope this does get to the point where it gets done, but correctly, where, you know, everybody can be in a great, and have these great experiences with meeting these great people. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Mary Green, and I live on Alewife Circle, and I've noticed that no one mentioned seniors, some of who are waiting, say, five years for an apartment. I'm blessed to have one myself, and I'm a native, I went to Azurbeka since kindergarten, I now live in South Yarmouth, and I just think it's a shame there's not more available housing for the elderly, and so many assisted livings for $7,000 a month. I just wonder who's going to take care of these people, because people are leaving the Cape because they can't afford to live here, my son included.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'd now like to move to Planning Board discussion on this article, or would you like to go to Article 2?
Yeah. It's, I think we should do, do this, close the hearing, and then you guys can do your deliberations.
Okay, that's fine.
I forgot, we have another zoning amendment.
Just checking on the, on the order here, Kathy.
Got so wrapped up. The other zoning amendment we have is a relatively minor amendment to the sign bylaw, and what we're trying to do is just allow for the installation of some additional signs, specifically on town-owned property, that might be acknowledging the granting of specific naming rights or sponsorships, or accepting of donations, really to provide some type of alternative funding source for the town. It kind of came out of all the great work that we're doing on the Riverwalk Park and the Boardwalk, and maybe having some ways of getting some type of funding so that we can decrease maintenance costs, and maybe it could be a case of, you know, the Riverwalk event space sponsored by so-and-so, and that could be something that could change every few years. These signs would then be regulated by a Board of Selectmen naming rights, sponsorship, donation, sign policy, which we are working on developing, and would need to present to the Board of Selectmen, and it just would basically be getting it out of the zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaws are hard to change, we all know we've got to go to town meeting, two-thirds vote, Board of Selectmen's policy is just a public hearing for them to have at a regularly scheduled meeting. This is something that we have done already in the past, the roadway banner signs that you see around town, some of those slat ladder signs that direct you down to different businesses that might be on South Shore Drive, and also for any fundraising or special event signs. All of those right now are done through a Board of Selectmen naming rights policy and not done through the zoning bylaw.
Any comments or questions with regard to Article 2 regarding signs? So Kathy, before we begin our deliberations, we close the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We'll take a roll call. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair as well.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do they have to leave? You can stay.
You don't have to leave.
You don't have to leave.
Can't stay here.
You can stay.
We're not taking any more, we're not taking any more public comment.
You don't have to leave.
No, you can stay.
Let's begin with any... Let's begin with any board members' comments with regard to any changes we would like to offer for Article 1 Draft 3, also known as Draft 17.
I would just emphasize that Vita made a very good point, that the primary residence wasn't particularly, definition wasn't particularly grammatical, and the edit was just basically a primary residence is the dwelling where a person lives for a majority of the year and is considered their permanent address for legal purposes, period. A person may have only one primary residence at any given time. It said basically the same thing, it just was a little bit more convoluted. So, I think that was a good edit. She had had her hand raised at that meeting, but we never got to her, so she called me.
Oh, we missed her.
Not tonight, at another meeting.
Oh, when she was online.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, how do you recommend we make a motion to amend this?
I think you should discuss everything.
Yeah, discuss that, okay.
But I just wanted to make that, that's an easy one.
Yeah. Any comments or concerns about that?
Nope.
Among members?
I can make that edit.
And we know what legal purposes are?
Yeah, I would imagine voting, taxes.
I don't know. I don't know what legal purposes are. I mean, it's, I'm sure there's like a common, we all think we know what legal purposes are, but what are legal purposes?
I think it is exactly, where's your legal residence? Where are you paying your state income tax from? Where are you registered to vote? If you're registered to vote in Yarmouth, as far as I'm concerned, that's your golden ticket. You are a resident of the town of Yarmouth, because you picked the town of Yarmouth. You have a residence here, you have an address here, you're living here, and you're registered to vote here.
Kind of like getting a beach ticket. You've got to prove you live here.
Right, you've got to prove you live here.
Like legal requirements, like you pay taxes, you've got to do certain things.
I think it's, we had it more elaborate to say things like where you vote and pay state income tax and other legal purposes, and Town Council truncated it to just say legal purposes and not give into definition. You know, I think things with like trusts, it's like most of the trusts that we see are revocable trusts, so it's still the person's name, it's just their revocable trust. So, it would be, you know, I think those are pretty simple to identify. And I think if there's any, there's always going to be questions. I think the vast majority will be very obvious, but there'll be a few questions that people might need to do a little digging to see, you know, who is the trustee, what's the trust set up, and are those the people that are living there? I guess I would also say with some of the concerns that I've heard tonight, really sounds like they're concerned with the short-term rentals, because there is no owner on site or taking care of that. And it might literally be a property that has been purchased solely for the purpose of renting it out, so it solely is a commercial entity versus, this is my main home, I have created an accessory apartment, and I want to rent that out. That's a totally different situation. So, I understand that there may be some issues with some short-term rentals, with parking, and maybe there's, what it sounds like is over occupancy. I have noticed that it seems like even if you only have four people there, everyone has their own car for some reason. And there's lots of cars. But that's different than the accessory apartment, where you need to show that you have the parking on your property.
Also fundamentally, it's different in the sense that we are authorizing this through the zoning bylaw, as opposed to a natural right that you have when you have property.
Right.
This is institutionalizing the right to do this. That's, I think, a major difference. And I think that's one of the notions, I think, that Mr. Warren brought up, is that, you know, you have, as you said, you have a right, you own the property, if I want to rent it, then I can. And that's your right as a property owner. This is the town institutionalizing that kind of right in the zoning bylaw. That's a big difference. So, and it should be done, as we've tried to do, very cautiously, circumspectly, with restrictions.
Madam Chair, can I?
Mr. Slovac?
Enforcement was an issue, and I can understand, and I see why. Last town meeting, Mark, the selectman of the town voted to give you another person in your department. Have you been able to hire that person?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Rills, building commissioner. I have an advertisement out. No, we've not hired anybody. I haven't even received it. Oh, I did receive an application for somebody that didn't have the qualifications.
Is the issue qualifications, or pay, salary, or what? Because the enforcement's an issue.
I think right now, there's a lot of money being made out there with guys that are qualified to do it, and they really don't want to leave making the good money, you know, as opposed to being stable. So, right now, there's a lot of construction going on, and the guys that can do this work are construction guys, and that's what I think it is. I mean, as far as salary goes, yeah, yeah, everybody comes to work to make money.
So, suggesting that the people with enforcement issues, if they want to try to solve that problem, going to the selectmen or going to some finance committee meeting, budget season's coming up, and suggesting that we hire more people is not going to solve the problem because we can't hire the people you're allowed to hire.
All of Cape Cod is having an issue with hiring people. It's not just the town of Yarmouth, right, you know, the world, so.
One of the issues is sometimes employees can't find a place to live, because there are few, there aren't enough, I mean, that's also a factor.
I don't live on Cape Cod and couldn't afford it right now, so. And I need the half-hour drive to clear my head anyway, so.
I use Scotch.
Yeah, right.
Sure clears it, Jim?
No, I just want to be, I hear the word enforcement quite a bit, and I think that, you know, people have a misunderstanding of what enforcement is. Thankfully, we have a constitution in the United States that prevents me or my staff from kicking your door in to look for a violation. You know, we can all be thankful. I'm glad my building commissioner can't do that, because things would be ugly. But enforcement begins with a complaint. We're not driving around looking for problems. We have plenty of other things to do. There's a lot of construction going on in town, and, you know, people putting up illegal signs and that kind of thing. Those are the easy things to spot. What's going on inside your house? We don't know. The police don't know, for example, that there's a domestic happening next door until someone picks up the phone and dials 911. That's when enforcement begins. Once we get the complaint, we investigate. Enforcement begins with a letter, the second letter, a ticket, and we're modifying the way that we're enforcing, getting action from property owners, is where we've been around to different towns, both Tim, my deputy building commissioner, myself, have visited other towns to see how they enforce. And, you know, I want to get the violators, the egregious violators, to court quicker. And it's, we're about to test that. So, you've been given two warnings, and, you know, we walk a fine line. If we did that to businesses every day, you're not business friendly. The town of Yarmouth isn't business friendly. That's what we hear. So, either we're doing our job or we're not doing our job. We're going to do what we think is right. Until somebody tells me I'm wrong, that's what we're going to do. We're taking advice from Town Council. But, you know, we have to do something to address the enforcement issue. There's a lot of enforcement out there. I get a lot of people complaining about their neighbors. It happens every day, email, phone call, phone calls to the town administrator's office. It starts with investigation, and then it goes to a letter. And that's where enforcement begins. We cannot kick people's doors in and accuse them of doing things. We have to follow a process. Every violation, there's a process to address violations. So, am I done?
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other, any other comments or concerns, board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a couple, just a quick comment.
Certainly. Mr. Saban?
You know, and unfortunately, our audience of people that would like to have heard what I was about to say have left, so I will save some of that, but.
They watch it on TV?
Yeah, maybe they are. You know, enforcement, Mark just covered, but, you know, the quick response is, what would you do if you had a party next door? You know, you'd file a complaint, all right? So, it's kind of how that whole process works. You know, one of the things this bylaw is doing is taking some of the restrictions away, making it easier to be able to provide housing for those people, like some of these have explained. I do want to comment on this gentleman's comment about how much we rent for. We don't want to start telling people how much they can sell their cars for. We don't want to tell people how much they can sell their vegetables at the grocery store. So, we certainly don't want to tell people how much they can rent their houses for. And I don't think any of us, including that individual, would want to be told what to do when it comes to making an income. So, because we had those restrictions, it restricted the ability for people to invest in our community to create those. By taking that restriction of income away that an investor can make, it's going to allow us to create more of these. So, that's the response to, you know, how much you can rent it for. Well, if it's going to cost you, you know, $1,000, you're not going to say, well, I'll only rent it for 100. You've got to make your money back. So, that's where we're trying to say to people, we're not going to tell you how much to rent your house for. So, those are the quick comments. But I did come across, I think I have a little too much time on my hands these days, an issue that I'm not sure is an issue or not, but I want to bring it to the board's attention, and it's with regards to by right and special permit. I want to give us a scenario. I have a three-acre lot of land in a 40,000-square-foot neighborhood that allows a duplex to be built. So, under our bylaw, I can go build a duplex without a special permit. Am I misunderstanding that would say that if instead of building a duplex, I wanted to build a accessory apartment unit, I would now need to go to the ZBA?
Yes.
Because it's really just a difference in name. And so, it makes no sense to me why we're saying you have to go to the ZBA for a special permit if it's a accessory apartment unit, but by right, I can make it a duplex.
It's the number.
I'm lost in the concept there.
It's the number of properties that would be eligible. The number of properties that would be eligible for your duplex under your scenario, the number of properties that are out there that have double, the minimum lot size right now is very small. The number of lots that have 10,000 square foot or greater are significantly more.
I understand that, but those lots, regardless if it's one or 50, I don't know how many there are, I didn't count them, it makes no sense to me, and please explain to me how it does, that those lots, whatever that number of them are, can by right build a duplex. But if they decided, no, we don't want to build the duplex, we want to build a house with an accessory apartment, they've got to get a special permit. That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it's not supposed to. It's zoning.
Right, it's not supposed to. That's why it's called zoning.
This is part of my compromise, that I obviously lost my compromise to, is that this clearly makes no sense to me why we're saying a three-acre lot.
Real estate.
You can build a duplex, but you can't build an accessory apartment.
That's why you've got zoning bylaws that vary from business.
What is the difference?
Big difference, because.
What is it? Don't tell me big. What is it?
Because the, as Kathy said, the ability, or the scenario you just, there may be a handful that want to do that.
Irrelevant of the number.
Whereas it, it's called zoning. That's why you've got zoning. That's why it is, whether you understand it or not, go to the zoning board, because that's what the zoning, go, file a petition to change it, because that's what the zoning says, that's what, everyone has a, you know, an understanding about, you know, some lunacy about lumens, or where you put a fence, or where you put a driveway.
Madam Chair, file the petition to change it. This is where we change it. I don't, there's no other board, we are that board. So, when we have something that we're writing that's flawed, we should address it in either, because if I don't ask it now, I guarantee you, on whatever night we have town meeting, somebody's going to go, hey, I have a four-acre lot of land, but I want to build a accessory apartment with only one unit, but you're telling me no, but I can go build a duplex with three bedrooms.
Because zoning allows you.
I think what they'll say is, go build a duplex.
Yeah, why would you, why would you want to?
So, if I, I can answer, I think this, A, no zoning bylaw is perfect. You can't always see the, although you did illuminate that one, thanks. I was for some exemptions for those properties that didn't have to go through a special permit. For example, if you have a property now and you can put an addition on it that didn't violate setbacks and was okay, and you don't have to go through a special permit now, makes no sense to have to go through a special permit for this either.
We've already lost this discussion.
And we lost that battle. I did that because I don't think people understood the nuance of that, not being in construction and dealing with it all the time. So, they couldn't understand the nuance. So, that's why I said I'm okay with a special permit for these things. I didn't foresee specifically that.
But we just need to have an explanation at town meeting. I mean, if you're going to leave it that way, somebody's going to stand up and ask us, somebody should have it. Will you still our frequently asked questions?
If you can build the duplex, then build the duplex.
Yeah.
Right? You even have greater rights, because then you don't even need the residency. So, in your example, you build the duplex.
But I don't want a three-bedroom, I only want a one-bedroom and a.
So, build a one-bedroom duplex.
Yeah, build the.
I understand that, but it.
But that would be the answer.
In theory, it doesn't make sense.
Can I make one suggestive parallel? So, for instance, the geographical boundary of the Old Kings Highway District, to me, is ridiculous, that it's Route 6 and above. To me, that is not the intent of what I thought when I moved here, what the Old Kings Highway Historic District was. I thought it was the houses on 6A. And so, I, as both a homeowner and a business owner, fall within this Old Kings Highway District, and every time I want to do something, I have to go to them to get a certificate of it's okay, it's okay.
Unless you paint it white.
Well, no, but I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't like it, and in this scenario, you wouldn't like it. And yet, as Ms. Britta said, it is what we have. I also understand what you're saying, is that this is an opportunity to maybe make some tweaks, but at the same time, I don't know if this one interesting scenario is enough of a driver to now completely upend all the zoning that's in place for the lots that are more numerous, as Kathy outlined. So, I don't know if this is a good, if it's a good comparison, but I always get frustrated about Old Kings Highway, and I recognize there is a process in place to, I guess, to appeal, or to somehow get that district changed, and I'm sure that will never happen, but I do dream of it. And I think in this case, Jim, I know it's frustrating, and it will cost you more time and more money to have to go to ZBA for them to say, we're really sorry that you have to come here and do this, Jim, of course you can do what you want. Approved. So, I feel your pain in this scenario. I just don't know if we're going to be able to change.
They have a pre-existing home on a four-acre lot, right? And now they want to do that accessory apartment, finish off their basement. Well, they don't want to make it a duplex, they want to make it an accessory apartment.
They're going to have to go to ZBA.
But if they made it a duplex, they don't have to.
Mr. Rills?
It's dumb.
I think we're mixing, in response to Mr. Vincent, saying if he had a house that he could put an addition on, wouldn't need relief from the zoning board of appeals. What you're talking about is a structural expansion, and for any of these apartments or duplexes, this is a use. It's not talking about the structure itself, it's talking about the expansion of a use, and the increased use on a residential lot is what this bylaw is addressing. And I just wanted to make sure that we're, that's how I look at it, anyway. I enforce, I deal with it every day, I read it every day, and I try to interpret it. So, do a good job writing this, will you?
Can I follow up then, one question? And this is following along with Kathy's example here, 900-square-foot ranch, you could have up to a 450-square-foot accessory unit. But it couldn't go into the garage. If the garage is unfinished, you're not counting that as.
It could go in the garage, it's just that the garage doesn't count towards the 50%.
Right. So, somebody would apply to Mark for a building permit to finish the garage, let's say it's a 450-square-foot garage. So, now we have the 900-square-foot ranch, and they're going to create a 450-square-foot accessory apartment. So, now their house is no longer 900 square feet, it's 1350.
Well, their house is 900 square feet, and their accessory apartment's 450.
Right. So, do they, can they go back and say, well, my house is now 1350 square feet, so I want to make my.
Accessors will.
I want my accessory unit to be larger now?
No.
Because 50% of 1350 is now.
See, to me, incrementalism.
You have your accessory apartment, you're done.
You've been through the zoning board of appeals for that meeting, so they're going to have that documented, that it was 900 square feet.
Yeah.
And then you put a 450 on it, so it's going to, it's always going to be that 900 square feet.
You just switch the order, finish the garage first. Establish the baseline, you're done.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to follow the logic. So, you just finish the garage first, get it to 1350, and then you can have 675.
Yeah, that will be the under oath.
Yep.
I mean, unless I'm, yeah, yeah, of course you could.
This, quite frankly, is why, this is why people are nervous about this bylaw, because we just came up with several scenarios that don't make any sense.
But that's not a problem. All you're doing is, it's just a, it's just a larger house now, that's all. Nothing tricky is going on by finishing that garage first. Now you just have a larger house, and you can get a larger dwelling. Now, you just have a larger house, and you can get a larger dwelling. You still have to go before the board of appeals, you still have to meet all the requirements. It's just a larger house.
And there's a maximum.
It gets back to the size of your structure, so the zoning bylaw regulates structures, and it regulates use. 1350-square-foot house now, you want to increase the use, so you still need that special permit. So, the structure is one thing, and the use is another. And, you know, I have to, I have to help my guys understand that sometimes as well. So, you just have to think of it that way. So, the size of the structures are relevant, for the most part, when it comes to, you know, you still have to go to the board of appeals. The board of appeals is going to make sure that they, that it's not an enforcement issue for them, but they can condition any special permit that they issue.
Which is why I think making it a ZBA requirement helps with prior ZBA approvals for non-compliance setbacks. So, instead-
Right. So, I think that took care, that was carved out too, but now it also takes care of any issues that might, they might have granted relief from a setback.
Right.
And for a garage, it was okay, but now they want to put an apartment there with a door facing somebody's house from 10 feet away. Maybe it's too close now. So, ZBA will be able to make that decision, based on their prior relief.
And the public will be able to be there. That, I think, when you return with the nuances of the, I think the public, when it came down to by right versus special permit, they didn't get the nuances, because they weren't interested in the nuances. They were interested in the notion of public participation and getting notified. We heard that over and over again. I want to know, even if it is, the soft one was, if you're doing something inside your house, your outcome was, who cares what's going on inside your house? The neighbor next to you, even Chris Williams, said, "You know, I'd like to know. I'd want to know, if nothing else, because of the parking." So, they were more focused on the whole, the right they retained by having special permit. They were going to get notified, and they wanted to get notified. The nuances, I don't think they ever, they never really were interested in that. It was the whole process of, "I want to get, I want to know what's going on."
I'm always curious when people say they want to know what's going on in somebody else's houses, if they actually go knock on people's doors and ask them what's going on in other people's houses, or they just mind their own business and pretend to really want to know what's going on in other people's houses. Just a comment.
Well, that could be too, but most people are concerned about their property values.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of get in the weeds on the process here, Kathy. What are your suggestions here on?
I guess you guys received a lot of information this evening. Has any information that you have received this evening changed the board's view on the draft article?
Well, what about Vida's definition of change?
I think Vida's-
That's a given, right?
Are we all okay with Vida's suggestion?
Okay.
Okay. Other than Vida's suggestion, we have before us what is the article that we would present to the board of selectmen with that amendment on the definition of the change, as suggested at the meeting this evening. Any further comments or suggested changes, based on what you heard this evening?
I think one of the big things was, are we comfortable allowing the owner to live in either the accessory apartment or the primary residence? I heard that, I think, from a couple people.
And, yeah.
That's, I think that's in there now.
It is in there now, yes.
And here's my reasoning why. My mom is a widow, lives in a house that has three, four bedrooms in it, and she doesn't want people to move in there, you know, and share the space with her. But, I know she's expressed interest to me. If we could make an accessory apartment there, she would quickly move into that accessory apartment, because she doesn't need the space, and be able to rent that house that I grew up in to a small family.
Right.
So, right now, because she doesn't have that accessory apartment, a family doesn't have a place to rent.
And she's got three and two bedrooms.
And that's, and she's one person taking up space of three bedrooms. So, that's what that was for.
Exactly.
Well, plus, when you add on the year-round requirement and the residency requirement, you know, I understand, we can't, it's hard for this to deal with what's happening, because what's happening on your, on the street, as the way you described it, is unfortunately not part of this amendment, nor can, nor could it be, I don't think. I don't think we could, we can't really retroactively do anything, having said that.
This amendment, I'm sorry, Will, isn't going to change VRBO and Airbnb and what's going on in your neighborhood.
But in fact, it was written, it was written in a way that anything new couldn't become. There won't be any more short-term rentals under this. So, I totally understand what you're saying is happening, because it's real and it affects you, and that is true, but I also hope you know that we also were hearing and listening about that for the whole year, and we really made sure that that cycle, at least under this bylaw, cannot be repeated. And one other quick thing I want to ask is, I've been thinking over and over again, if this does pass at town meeting, I keep wondering, like, is this giant spigot going to turn on? And the building department and the ZBA are going to get overwhelmed, you know, with dozens and dozens of hearings and applications. And I feel like we have really put a lot of hurdles in place, reasonable hurdles, whether it's public participation, all the work that has to get done in terms of compliance with SEPTIC and building permits and health codes, as well as the lot conformity and everything else beyond. I understand that there is fear, because change can be fearful, but at the same time, we also reserve the right, if this does pass, to have more conversation, if there is this unbelievable spigot that gets turned on, and the ZBA is overwhelmed with three hearings, you know, a month. So, I do feel like, while there is reasonable fear because of change, I do feel like we've set up enough, not roadblocks, but at least spillways, to kind of pick up the runoff, in that I do hope that if it does pass at town meeting, we'll also make sure that we do a good job of checking in with ourselves and our department heads, I'm sure will as well, if there is this giant turnout. I also believe we did some research with some other towns on the Cape, and given what we've seen and heard, I respect the fact there's been national studies in California and other places, but here on the Cape, I think the largest number in a single year might have been 10.
It was 10 in Barnstable.
It was like 8 to 11, I think, in Brewster and other, but Barnstable actually had the most. I think it might have been as many as 24. But that was the first year that that new bylaw had been enacted, and they have actually a more liberal bylaw than we have here.
I'd add this too, Will.
Please.
It takes money to put on an ADU onto your house. We're just assuming that all of these lots, everybody has the finances and the means to do it, which isn't going to be the case.
It was also brought up earlier in public comment, and I do totally respect that point of view. At the same time, as your example, just listed for your own personal example, Chris, you know, there are going to be some people that will now have the ability to make that investment decision, right? Even if that number is not an overwhelming number.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, so, I just want to circle back for one second. The question before us, that Kathy wanted, relates to Section 11, on the owners of the principal structure shall occupy as their primary residence, either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment. Are we all okay with that?
We just want to-
Anyone want to suggest changes to that language? We heard some members of the public this evening.
Okay, it's 407.3, 407.3, Section 11. Yes, sorry, I just, you said Section 11, and there wasn't a Section 11. You're welcome.
That's why you're the clerk.
No, no, well, yeah, that's part of it. 40, it's page-
Thanks, Lou.
Page 3.
Where did that come from? Who knows?
I'm kind of enjoying it.
Okay.
I kind of like it.
I do, I do think that's a reasonable thing to discuss. It's on page three of seven, and it's at the top of the page under number 11.
Three of seven, zoning article one. So, I'm just trying to help Kathy along here-
Right.
-because her job is to get something back to us with any changes, or if the changes are-
The ability to live in either one, sorry.
Yeah, or if the changes are extremely minor, that we might be able to actually take a vote this evening. But I will look for her for guidance on that. So, on that section, paragraph 11, we're all okay on that. Kathy, what else? Did you have any other? I didn't see enforcement. I think we've written the enforcement section as tight as it can be, and Mark has explained to us over and over again where and how he works with what he has. And I don't know that there's a way for us, I personally don't think there's a way for us to tighten the enforcement. If members have any comments there.
Well, just, when you make your presentation for the board of selectmen, I do think it's worth saying again, if you can find extra money, give it to Mark.
Yeah.
Give Mark money.
Mr. Saban, you had wanted to ask a question, I think, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, we're all concerned about these changes, but I think in reality, what Will has said is that this bylaw is probably more restrictive than the existing bylaw. It's pretty darn hard, I mean, if you try to apply this bylaw, it's pretty darn hard to achieve all the things that you need to achieve to create them. So, when you're looking at, like, for example, Captain's Village, which is a concern to some people, you know, most of those lots are 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. You can't add a bedroom. You can, you know, move the deck chairs around on your Titanic, but you can't bring another chair in. So, I mean, that's just one example, because when you start throwing in all the other restrictions that are not even in this bylaw, health, sanitation, et cetera. So, when you really think about it, we've probably made it even more difficult in many ways to create an accessory unit than it was in the past.
With the exception of the two-bedroom. The 10,000 square feet, you could have three bedrooms.
Yeah, I don't think it's more restrictive, and I'm concerned that you're-
No, in some ways, I'm not going to over- in some ways.
Because the big give is that you don't have to limit your, right, the market rate, you're not limited on your restriction, and it's not limited to family-related. You're making it much more, that's a huge expansion of opportunities.
Those two are items, but there are other ways we've probably-
And Zone 2 has always been the-
I don't think was required with-
Zone 2's always been the Zone 2, that's the same.
We've addressed some other issues that were not addressed previously.
We have 52 family units, so we'll see in a year, I suppose, how many.
Exactly right.
I do think that you may find that some people who do have the family-related unit, the family member does pass away, maybe it's being used illegal as a rental. That's why the building department inspects it every two years, and they catch those on a regular basis. But instead of that going back to nothing, they now have the ability to say, "Oh, my family member doesn't need it anymore, but I know my friend down the street could use this, you know, who works at Stop &amp; Shop, and I'd be happy to rent it to them." Otherwise, they'd have to decommission it, if they didn't have another family member to go into it. And what a waste of kind of that investment that they might have made. So, that's another opportunity, if something that's already on the books, it's available, it was permitted correctly to begin with, could easily be converted over to a rental unit, so.
Again, trying to move through some process here. Are there any other provisions, as contained in what we presented this evening, that members would like to suggest a change for? Hearing none.
Pencils down.
Number 17 has it.
No, we're going to go to 18, because we're going to change that.
We're going to make the Vera edit.
Lucky 18.
I'm just looking through the notes really quickly.
What about the comment that was made about the renters had to be workers in Yarmouth or residents in Yarmouth?
Residents are already in there.
But they don't necessarily have to work in Yarmouth, they just have to live there.
We put back in resident, it was in and out.
Yeah, right. How you forcing that?
Yeah, I think enforcing that you're working in town, I'm not even sure if that's legal to require some-
You have to get paycheck stubs, you know?
It doesn't matter. I mean, I don't think we can necessarily do that. I think being a resident, and then, you know, even like the woman who's talking about not enough housing for seniors, you know, you may have, oh, my cousin, she's 65, I want to, she's not working anymore, but I want her to move in and then have a place. So, it doesn't necessarily be ideal if it's, I think, in many cases, for workforce housing, because that's a huge need that we have here, but senior housing is also a huge need, so.
It bothers me that you use 65 as the number.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just meant that that's the time people retire, not that that's a senior or an old person.
So, Kathy, is it appropriate to make a motion at this point? What would you like to, what's best for you? Do you need to put in front of us an actual formal document that includes all the changes, and we come back and vote on it next time? Or can-
Is everyone going to be here next time?
Is that October 4th?
I'm so happy to see all of your-
October 4th.
October 4th. Because we, honestly, seven people here, the more people voting, I think it's a more powerful recommendation. There's no reason why, if you don't want to make any changes, that you couldn't vote to, you know, to move, you know, Article 1, Draft 3, as amended, to amend the primary residence definition, period. You could vote that. And you could vote Article 2, you know, Draft Number 4, September 6, whatever.
Don't move.
I may not be here, but I would like to definitely vote, have my vote counted, but I may not be here.
Let's do it now.
Because I'll be out of, I'll be in Europe.
I'd say move it along, Madam Chair.
So, may I have a motion to recommend zoning article number 1, Section 407, Draft 3, as amended for the definition of primary residence, dated August 24, 2023, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to modify certain positions related, provisions related to accessory apartments?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll take a vote. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Aye.
Will? I'm Peter, Mr. Slovak?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair as well.
So unanimous, awesome. Thank you. With regard to Article 2, signs.
Kathy's made a presentation. We have no public comment. Any planning board discussion, any further on that?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the, bleh, bleh. Number 2.
Zoning article number 2.
Dated September 6.
I got some language for Kathy. I may have a motion to recommend zoning article number 2, Draft 4, dated September 6, 2023, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw to modify certain provisions related to signs.
That was so much better than what I said, Madam Chair. I would second that, or make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Mr. Saban, a vote, any discussion?
No.
A vote, Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Lou? Mr. Slovak?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the Chair as well. We're supposed to be serious and professional. I just dropped it.
No, it's okay.
While we're at it, who's going to move, recommend, and explain? We usually just do that by consensus.[1643.94]
In this town meeting?
It's November 7.
November 7. Well, I have a, can we talk about special town meeting for a second, since that's the general subject, or I'm going to ask that we turn it into the general subject? I don't know. I predict there will be lots of back and forth and comment when this comes up at special town meeting. It's just a prediction, I have no idea what's going to happen. I guess what I'm wondering is, is it going to be incumbent upon the Chair or upon Kathy to sort of bat away some of the things that are just factually incorrect? So if somebody stands up and says, oh my God, that means 28 people can move into the house next door, you know? In other words, how are we going to manage the emotion and the reasonable fear that people have with the reality of the actual bylaw and what it says and what it does?
Usually it's the person who is presenting. And then if the person that is presenting doesn't have the answer, can always turn to Kathy or another member of the board that might be able to help.
I think we'll have two duty experts there. Our, our friend, Mr. Grills, and Kathy.
These two, right?
And I think questions can be deferred to them by who's ever presented.
It feels like that's an important thing that we all are ready for, and I assume you are thinking about this as well as I am. Because, again, all this hard work will result in a vote of our fellow citizens and don't have any idea how that's going to go, not to mention our friend, the Attorney General of the state of Massachusetts.
Mr. Saban?
I, I think, I hear what Will's saying, and maybe it's beneficial to us to make sure that our FAQ sheet is available at town meetings so that some of those types of questions can be answered.
Right, the one that Kathy has done an amazing job on.
The one we've had, yeah. So maybe we make that available at town meeting to eliminate some of those.
And to the select board, excuse me for interrupting, in a couple of weeks.
But you will never eliminate, one of the things I love most about town meeting is somebody's going to stand up and say something dumb that.
No, someone's going to stand up and say, everything should be by special permit. Someone will say that, my prediction.
It already is.
And it is.
We got emails this week that said, everything should be by special permit.
I think this is one of those articles where we'll probably be allowed to give a, a brief presentation.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
And I do, I love that idea, the FAQs, and hopefully the select board, it can go in their packet as well.
Yep. Do we have any volunteers to present?
When is the, what's the date?
November 7. At the new intermediary.
Is it, is it confirmed that it's happening there?
It's my understanding.
Release the Sir Debit of August, we're good.
Okay, I was going to say, because otherwise it's got a place, it's at Matiche's, question mark?
Yeah. It's abandoned now.
Yeah, I was going to say, the cobwebs in there.
Yeah, not abandoned, I'm sorry.
Wasn't my choice.
If you know what a meme is, Madam Chair, but there's one of Homer Simpson receding into the hedges. Do you guys know?
That one?
I, I do know what.
That's the way I feel right now.
I'm not that old, Will, I do know what a meme is.
I'm just saying, but no, no, but you know, do you know the one about, do you know the Homer Simpson one?
I stopped watching that a long time ago.
Still going. All right, anyway, I'm receding into the hedges, is what I'm trying to say, Madam Chair.
Unless it's in the Wall Street Journal, I don't, I don't know.
Understood, well, I will work, I will work on.
Let's go. Any volunteers? I was looking at my vice chair, but apparently he will be otherwise indisposed in Italy.
Oh, going to vote remotely? I'm kidding, I don't think that's.
I can move it remotely, but, you know, when, when your wife says you're going to Italy, you say, yes, ma'am.
I'll be more than glad to do it, but I would love to offer it to someone else. Okay, that's done. Who wants to do signs?
Everywhere is signs.
Somebody, somebody step.
As I move, the article is printed in the warrant.
You just, it's just, you just read it.
That one's easy.
I move the article is printed in the warrant. There you go.
It is.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Yes, well, if you had to give me the choice.
So much for the hedges.
I'll take the second one. I'm out of the hedges for Article 2.
He came out of the hedges, Will.
I'm back from the hedges, Article 2. It's a really funny one, he just goes right into the hedges.
He just, like, he wants to get away from the topic and just.
It's a meme, too.
Now you're going to make me watch it.
Jeff, Fana Jeff.
Okay.
Kathy, what else with regard to Board of Selectmen?
I, I think the only thing is for the next meeting, I would just prepare the draft of the information that would be presented to the Board of Selectmen on our, at our August 10 meeting, and then you guys can let me know. I'm sorry, did I say August?
Now we're going backwards. You've gotten the time machine there, Kathy. Yikes.
I think I don't even know what year it is, what year?
I'm there for that.
October 10 is the Board of Selectmen meeting. So on the 4th, we would just review the submittal information, if you guys had any edits or whatever you wanted to do. But it would include, you know, the vote and all the information.
There are no edits, pencils down.
Yes. I'm going to provide the town administrator with this, these small edits tomorrow, so hopefully he can get those incorporated into, I believe they're going to be looking at the first draft on the 26th of September, right? That's the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Is this the entire warrant? Are there other things?
Oh, there's other things, yeah.
Okay. I will pay more attention.
Trust me, they would not have a special town meeting just for this, they'd tell us push it off to some town meeting. There's always other stuff.
Okay, so, moving on, we have meeting minutes in our package from September 6. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of September 6, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Saban?
I'm not sure, I was here.
Who seconded it?
You were.
I were? Okay, then I.
You was.
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Good night, thank you.
Ms. Britta?
Good work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
So is it unanimous?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, who seconded it? Thank you, Peter.
Committee updates from anyone, any committee meetings?
I would just quickly like to say about the Board of Appeal's decisions, I just want to say thank you again for forwarding, the way that they're doing them.
Yeah, it's helpful.
You can choose to read the whole decision, or you can read the little summary in red or however it's done. What Dolores is doing or whomever is extremely helpful. So you can choose to dip into the details, if not, you can stay up at 10,000 feet, and it really is appreciated. So I just wanted to say thank you to Dolores and to you, Kathy.
Dolores puts that together.
Never mind, thank you, Dolores.
Any board member items?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just a quick committee update on the, on RAC, Waste Water Committee. First of all, we did discuss Will taking over, I don't know where that stands with the Board of Selectmen vote. I don't know if you have any updates on that, Kath.
Um, they didn't tell me, but I'd be, definitely keep my eyes out for the next Board of Selectmen meeting, to see if they would do with them.
But that all being said, there was, I don't know if you stayed long enough to listen to the.
It was interesting.
Yeah, DEP came down back about a month ago, went through where the site for the treatment plant's going to be, and then came back with a letter to the town stating that they have some concerns about the groundwater discharge permit. And it's actually kind of stalled at the moment until we get some clarification from the state. Their concern, the state's concern is that singular site, all the water going into the ground right there would raise the groundwater elevation a certain percentage. And there's some obscure law within it that they can't do that. So the bottom line is, is now we're trying to re-educate the state about, number one, where our water comes from, number two, when that water would be dumping into the, at the highest time of year, it's summertime, our water typically goes down a foot or two at that time of the year. So even though we may be raising more than what the state limit is, you have that buffer of a couple feet. So there's some give and take. It's actually slowed the process down because it does not allow the, the town to release the funds to start the actual groundwork, to start putting in the pipe until this gets clarified.
And aren't we supposed to be in conjunction with the state to get some financial benefits?
That is correct. That's where, there's two different.
We don't want to lose all that money.
That's the rub.
That's the rub, exactly right. So town administrators working with it, working with the engineering company, trying to get DEP to re-educate them on.
It's the obscure law, maybe it's out of.
It's not, it's not really an obscure law, it's just a law on the books. I don't know the percentages, so I don't want to sit here and state something on, on TV that's wrong. But all I know is, is it's put, it's put nothing in jeopardy, it's just put everything kind of on delay for a minute. The problem is, there's bids released that these guys are supposed to go to work, and now the guys who want to go to work, they're going to wait, and they don't want to wait, so.
The state is not a quick mover.
Right. So hopefully they can continue to push it and get this moving, but it just, you know, I walked out of there not as happy as the meeting before, let's put it that way.
And I watched the meeting going, oh my gosh, what have I asked to be assigned to?
Engaged our state reps in working with the state.
That was, that was some of the discussion that came up, was we need to absolutely start engaging our state reps.
Yeah, we don't want to lose that money.
Exactly right.
Huge chunk of money.
And push come to shove, get, you know, Mr. Lawyer involved. We don't want to, we want to be partners with the state, not become adversarial, but if it comes to a direction that that has to be the case, then that is a direction, as a committee, we recommended that. If we have to go there, we have to go there.
Because as I said, we're number one on the list.
Yeah, and it's a temporary elevation, it's not permanent, once it happens, doesn't it go up and down?
Absolutely, absolutely correct. It goes up and down.
Is it the time of year they're concerned about, or the amount, or?
Time of year, the amount of water flow going into the ground from the treatment plant would raise the elevation by X, and that by X is higher than what's allowable by state law.
It's a mounting analysis.
Exactly right, it's a mounting issue. But the part that they don't understand is, at that time of year, when the population in Yarmouth is at its highest, the groundwater levels have already dropped by that point because everyone's sucking water out of the ground.
Seems like a simple solution to me.
Well, you're not part of DEP, Susan, if you were, it would be.
Just explain it to them.
Give her DEP's number and.
I'd be happy to.
Susan's ready to drive to Lakeville. Here we go.
I think it's, I think this one has to go to Boston.
Okay, right, well, that's what I was also, when I started hearing the words Boston get thrown around, I was like, oh, boy.
Any other board member items? Kath, want to run through our upcoming meetings quick?
We have our regular meeting on October 4, which will kind of go over our preparation for our October 10 meeting with the Board of Selectmen, where we go over our zoning amendment discussion. On the 4th, maybe we can talk a little bit more about the, the policy, the Board of Selectmen policy. I did reach out to Kyle Pettisini over in Barnstable about the signage and whether they had something on the books for sponsorship, and they do not. They don't allow that, that type of thing. So it was a good try.
Well, okay, no other keep, I mean, no other towns?
I'll try sending it out through the mass planner.
Thank you.
And see what we get from that.
I would just hate for you to have to invent something that, you know, in the amount of time that you're focused on so many things.
Yeah.
It would be the time better spent.